Call this meeting of the Mayor and Commissioners and the Planning Commissions, joint public hearing, to order. Can you hear me okay, Dennis? Can we have the roll call for the elected body, for the Mayor and Commissioners?
Yes. Mayor Marion.
Mayor Marion has excused tonight.
Commissioner Offenrein.
Present.
Commissioner Braun.
Present.
Commissioner Pearson.
Present.
Commissioner Wornik.
Present.
Let's show that you do have a quorum.
Okay. So, we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we observe a moment of silence for all of our first responders, our soldiers, our emergency personnel, and anyone going through struggling times today. We'll continue on. This is a joint meeting tonight of the Mayor and Commissioners and our Planning Commission. And I don't think we've done this before. This is a first for us. So, wish we had a bigger audience in here. Thank you for coming. So, I'm gonna read an opening statement. I'll be filling in tonight as Vice Mayor for Mayor Marion, who is absent tonight. So, we are meeting here tonight to hold a joint public hearing of the Mayor and Commissioners and the Rising Sun Planning Commission in order to hold a public hearing to hear comments from the public before a formal vote on the adoption of the Town of Rising Sun's amendments to our comprehensive plan. The Board of Commissioners will open the meeting, and then we'll make a motion to turn the meeting over to the Planning Commission, to allow them to hold their portion of the public hearing first. At the conclusion of the Planning Commission's public hearing, they may opt to pass a motion to approve the comprehensive plan as submitted with amendments, or to delay approval until a later date. Please note that if the Planning Commission does not approve the plan, then the elected body will not hold a public hearing on the matter until such time as the Planning Commission Board approves the plan. If the Planning Commission Board recommends approval of the comp plan, then the elected body will hold their portion of the public hearing. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the elected body can approve the comprehensive plan as submitted with amendments, delay approval until a later date, or reject the plan. If both Boards approve the comprehensive plan, it will be reformatted to get rid of the identified changes, and then it will be forwarded to the Maryland Department of Planning and loaded on the town's website. The staff will provide an overview for everyone present, and it will serve as the formal presentation for both hearings. As a general rule, public comment is limited to three minutes per person. We would ask that if you have the same concerns as someone that spoke before you, summarize your thoughts. So, can I get a motion by our elected body to turn the meeting over to the Planning Commission to hold their portion of the public hearing? Is it moved?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, we move forward with the Planning Commission's section. Chairman Hemmer?
Okay. It is 6:44, and I'd like to call the Planning Commission's portion of the meeting to order. Judy, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Chairperson Susan Hemmer?
Here.
Commission Member Braun?
Here.
Commission Member Jamison?
Here.
Let the record show that Commission Member Goble is not present. You do have a quorum.
Thank you, Judy. We have one member in our audience. Did you sign in, Dave?
I did.
Okay. Would you like to speak?
Not right now, thank you.
Okay. Well, here's your time. Since we have no one to speak, I guess we move on.
Yeah. To staff presentation. Alright, so, what you have in front of you is two documents. And as I refer to them on the monitor tonight, there's actually three separate documents. And that's because there was no way, Chapter Six in the Comprehensive Plan was a separate standalone document. And let me back up by saying that this is a process that started probably back in late 2015, early 2016. It really started picking up momentum when the Maryland Department of Planning agreed to provide us with some consulting assistance. With that, I'd like to introduce Mr. David Dowstrom from the Department of Planning. You're all familiar with him. Dave has been attending just about every single one of the Planning Commission's meetings since January of 2017. It's worth noting that the Planning Commission meetings are advertised, and they have been holding those meetings, for the most part, twice a month, starting at 6:30 in the evening. And most of the time, those meetings go at least till 8:30, 9 o'clock, sometimes going even further. So, the culmination of all that, and the reason for saying all that, is there's been a tremendous amount of time and labor put into this document by the Planning Commission. And Mr. Dowstrom has been very instrumental in helping us move that forward. So, going back to my original point, you have two documents in front of you, which is a Rising Sun Comprehensive Plan, and then you also have the packet that's dated, from the Maryland Department of Planning, dated May 29, 2019. And this is essentially the comments that were submitted by all the state agencies as part of the Maryland Clearinghouse, Department of Planning Clearinghouse. Let me back up and explain what that is. Very often, when there are certain projects that take place in the state of Maryland, for instance, when we did our USDA projects for both the sewer plant and the Chester water line, there's information that has to go to the various state agencies. So, the Department of Planning basically chaperoned a clearinghouse, essentially. And so, whatever you're, in many cases, the projects that you are working on, you send to the Department of Planning, and then they make sure the copies go to State Highway, the Department of Natural Resources, MDE, and the Historical Commission, whatever, just about whatever state agency you can imagine, it is sent to those state agencies to have a chance to comment on whatever the project is you're working on. And then that culminates in the Department of Planning basically giving you a review letter. In this case, it's a packet of information. It is required, or the Department of Planning requests, that we have this packet entered into the record, which we are doing here tonight. So, in addition to the Rising Sun Comprehensive Plan, you have the clearinghouse comments from the Department of Planning. Again, it's not just the Department of Planning, there's other agencies in here that reviewed our comprehensive plan. This has been a long process that anyone that's familiar with Microsoft Word or Microsoft Excel, you can imagine that after two and a half years of making changes and strike changes and comments and stuff like that, the backside of the program gets very loaded with stuff that has to happen. And it almost feels like the project has been on its last leg over the last couple of weeks, because we've had Microsoft Word doing some really funky things over the last week and a half. But Dave, and Judy, and I, and some others have been able to plow through it. As a result, if we go to look at the items on the computer screen, you're gonna see the Comprehensive Plan document up to page 90, and then there's another document on here of the screen that goes from 91 to 112, and that is actually Chapter Six of the overall document. And then you go back to the first document that has Chapter 13 in it. My point is, I didn't wanna run the risk of trying to merge those two separate documents together. So, what you have is everything you need to have on a paper form, but as we're going through it, and if I need to jump around on screens, it might be a little bit of a delay. The other thing that's important to note is the Town of Rising Sun already has a Comprehensive Plan. It did its Comprehensive Plan back in 2010. And as required by state law, every couple of years, at one time, it used to be 10 years, I believe now it's, is it five years?
It was six.
It was six.
Now it's 10.
Yeah. It was originally every six years, you had to amend it, and now it got updated to every 10 years. So, two things, we were relatively, we were ahead of the curve in updating our Comprehensive Plan in terms of the state guidelines. But as you know, the Town of Rising Sun has essentially been in a water and sewer building moratorium for 13 years, and we haven't had a whole lot of stuff going on. And it was very important that before we get the water and sewer projects up and running, and start to experience the development pressures that we already are, it was important to get our comp plan done. To back up for a second, if you imagine a pyramid, the idea of a pyramid, you have a Comprehensive Plan at the tip of the pyramid, and the Comprehensive Plan basically provides the enabling language for you then, to then create a zoning code and a land development code. And so, the Comprehensive Plan basically gives, to some degree, some general concepts of what you wanna be doing in your community. And in order to execute those visions, or move forward with those visions, you would get involved in updating your zoning code, and then also updating your land development code. So, regardless of what happens here tonight, we're only halfway done the project, for the most part, because the next thing we have to do is to get the zoning code completed. Fortunately, the Planning Commission has put a lot of time into that also, over the last couple of years. So, it won't take quite as long as a Comprehensive Plan did to get it done. So, this is basically an amendment to our Comprehensive Plan. That's why if you were to look at the document, there is a Chapter 13 referenced in this packet, but there were no planned changes to Chapters 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. So, this basically just gets incorporated into the town's existing Comprehensive Plan to make the complete packet. So, reemphasizing, these are amendments to the existing Comprehensive Plan. A couple of things that I'd like to cover in the review comments from the Department of Planning. So, here's basically the cover sheet of the plan, and... A couple of things that I want to highlight, and I think it's important to highlight these, because it's no secret that we have had some struggles with Cecil County government in terms of not being able to come to an agreement or an understanding on what the Town of Rising Sun believes is its sovereign right to control its destiny as set forth in the state laws. The two particular state laws in question are in the Annotated Code of Maryland. One is the Land Use Code, which covers everything regarding planning and zoning, and the authorities that states and cities and towns have the ability to create, planning commissions, zoning hearing boards, when they meet, advertisements, everything about that is basically listed in the Land Use Article. Of importance note, the Land Use Article requires every municipality to have a Comprehensive Plan. Now, some municipalities, if they're not very large, or if they are in agreement with the local county to provide the planning and zoning activities, the county can do the Comprehensive Plan or incorporate that town into the county's Comprehensive Plan. The other provision is that, in the case of a municipality that practices its own zoning and land development, such as we do, we are then charged with developing our own Comprehensive Plan. And that is something that the town has done for many years, and this is part of what this endeavor is. But another interesting point here is that the, any municipality that enforces zoning regulations and has the authority to enforce zoning codes, also must create, as part of their Comprehensive Plan, a municipal growth area. And you're gonna see that tonight in our Comprehensive Plan. We have created this municipal growth area. And this is one of the first disagreements that we are having with the county right now, is that we feel that the state law clearly states that the, in this case, the Town of Rising Sun is charged with developing a Comprehensive Plan, is charged with developing a municipal growth area, and the approval process of the Comprehensive Plan, the final approval does not rest with a county government. We are required to send a copy of our Comprehensive Plan, more specifically, our growth plan, to the county, but a county cannot reject that plan out of hand. They can have concerns about it, and they can request a third-party mediator to try to negotiate or work through any of the differences. You're gonna see in this letter, the county has basically just rejected our plan in its entirety, which on the surface is an issue, but it's even more of a critical issue, because there's another portion of the state law called the Environmental Code. And in the Environmental Code is where you find the requirements for master sewer and water plans. And basically, what that is, is the Maryland Department of the Environment, and these are my words, but basically, they have created a gatekeeper system of where sewer and water is gonna go in the various jurisdictions throughout the state of Maryland. And so, if you can, if you understand the fact that there are 157 municipalities in the state of Maryland, it would be a lot easier for the state, the Maryland Department of the Environment, and the Environmental Code, to basically say that county governments will be the gatekeepers of those master sewer and water plans. But it also says in there that the county shall adopt all or parts of a municipality's master sewer and water plan. It does not give them the right to reject the plan in its entirety. And as we are all familiar now, back in March of this year, Cecil County rejected our plan outright, would not consider any of our amendments. And so, obviously, you know, when you summarize the intent of the Land Use Article and the Environmental Code, it's pretty clear that the land, the state intended for municipalities to develop a comp plan, develop a growth area, not have to have final approval from a county government to do it. And then the Environmental Code talks about the county having to adopt all or parts of a municipality's master sewer and water plan. So, it's pretty clear that there is implied authority of a municipality, again, to control its own destiny. We've run up against a brick wall, because the county is just taking the position of, no, we don't like any of your plans, and we're not going to approve them. Another issue that is hanging out there is that there is language in the county code that one could argue is contradictory to the state laws. There's a section of the county code that basically says that the county does not have to adhere to Article 66B. Now, Article 66B used to be how the state covered all this planning and zoning stuff, before they put it in a new section and called it the Land Use Article. So, when we talk about the Land Use Article and Article 66B, we're basically talking about the same subject here. But the county has a provision in their code that basically says they don't have to adhere to Article 66B. And that's never, it's sort of obscure language that no one's really ever paid attention to, but suddenly, the county appears to be taking the position now of invoking that section of their county code that clearly circumvents the state law. The other item that's in the county code is, if you recall, I just said, the state of Maryland tells the municipality to create a municipal growth area. In that municipal growth area, we are also required to talk about how we're going to provide water and sewer to that municipal growth area. So, again, the implied responsibility and authority is basically bestowed to the local municipalities. The county, again, has a section in their code that appears to circumvent the state law, in which it says, no water and sewer facilities can be extended beyond the town, beyond the limits of a town without the approval of the county executive. And therein lies a big sticking point that the town has with the county, in that I just got done talking about how the state law says you develop a Comprehensive Plan, you develop a master sewer and water plan, you go through an approval process, but the county's invoking a code that says that none of this can happen unless the county executive approves it, not the county council, the county executive. So, now, the ability to control the destiny of each of the municipalities in Cecil County appears to clearly lie with the county executive, which is not the intent or the spirit of the state laws. So, that's why we have been working very closely with the Department of Planning and the Maryland Department of the Environment, to try to resolve some of these differences. So, the reason why those things have a big impact on us is that, the way it currently stands right now, although Northeast sells water, roughly 40% of their water user base is beyond the incorporated limits of the Town of Northeast, 40%. And Northeast, I believe, has a population of about 8,800 people, just in the incorporated limits. So, you can imagine how many service connections they have in total between the town and outside of town, and 40% of that is served to areas that are not in the incorporated limits. Elkton provides water and sewer services beyond their town limits. Other communities provide water and sewer services beyond their town limits, but the county administration is taking the position that they are not going to allow the Town of Rising Sun to do the same thing. So, you can see how there's an inequity there that rises to the level of really not being fair. So, that, again, is the position that the town is taking in moving forward. So, with that, I wanna get into some of the more specific items of the review letter here. Generally speaking, Mr. Dowstrom had reported to us before that, for the most part, a lot of these comments from the different agencies were very easily corrected, and the document that you have tonight has essentially made all those recommendations. Now, here's an important thing to keep in mind. Although you send your comments to the Department of Planning's Clearinghouse, you're not obligated to incorporate those recommendations. However, if you choose not to incorporate those recommendations, that could become a problem for the town down the road, or any municipality for that matter, because there are, for instance, there are funding programs, whether it be sustainable communities, infrastructure, paving, sewer plants, anything that we could get funding from the state of Maryland to help us with, can be negatively impacted if we're not in a priority funding area. And I don't wanna get into all the specific details of what a priority funding area is, but it's basically designed to avoid that old term we hear of suburban sprawl. They don't want things just going outside the boundaries of a town, so it sprawls out there, because it becomes very difficult, from a business standpoint, to provide all the services that are necessary. So, in short, the state doesn't wanna be providing funding, essentially, to initiatives that are gonna be very difficult to achieve that goal, because they're just, they're spread out too much, and they don't meet some recommended standards of the state of centralizing services and monies to benefit a greater number of people. So, that's just one example of, although you're not obligated to incorporate the comments from the Clearinghouse, you could get yourself sideways with the Department of Planning in the future, and you could also get yourself sideways with the Maryland Department of the Environment. If they have noted some things that down the road, when you apply for a permit to put a sewer line in, a water line in, or whatever it may be, you might not be able to get approval, because they wanted you to do something a certain way, and you didn't do that. So, it makes sense, for two reasons, to incorporate these ideas. One, because in many cases, they make sense, and we should always forge a good partnership with the state agencies. And then, secondly, as I noted, you can get yourself sideways and have unintended consequences down the road if you don't incorporate them. So, one of the items that is of interest here is the, we sent our plans to Cecil County, our Comprehensive Plan, and Cecil County basically just came back and said that our Comprehensive Plan did not meet the county's Comprehensive Plan. And you're gonna see, in the way we structured our Comprehensive Plan, we went out of our way to do certain things that should partner up, and did partner up very nicely with the vision that the county has. One of the big sticking points with the county telling us that we can't move our water and sewer, and we can't grow our community, is that they are claiming that all of the growth in the county is designated to be on the 4095 corridor, which the Town of Rising Sun is on record in the past, going all the way back to 2017, of commending the county for their vision of improving the economic status of the 4095 Beltway. It makes sense to drive economic development into those areas, but you can't do it at the expense of everybody else drying up on the vine. You know, our economic prosperity is very important also. But more importantly, although the county has taken the position that our plan does not meet their plan, mainly they're saying that we're not in a projected designated growth area, that is not true, because there are about six or seven different references in the county's actual Comprehensive Plan that specifically identifies the Town of Rising Sun, the areas around the Town of Rising Sun, as a designated growth area. So, it's frustrating that the county, on one hand, is stating that our Comprehensive Plan does not marry up with their plan, because we wanna grow our community, we wanna provide services, we wanna, we wanna control our own destiny in terms of economic development, which benefits all of our residents, more importantly, our taxpayers. But the county appears to be taking a position of blocking that, because they're saying that it contradicts their Comprehensive Plan, when clearly, it does not. And you will find in the review letter from the Department of Planning that they essentially mention the fact that the county says it's in violation with their plan, but they do not give specific evidence or areas to identify as where it conflicts with their actual plan. So, that's very telling there, that, you know, we're not... I think the Planning Commission has done an excellent job of creating a document that should not be threatening to the county, or to the constituents around the county. And I wanna give you a, sort of, an overview of what this plan does in general. And there were a couple objectives that the town wanted to meet in there. Number one, we do not want to change the role character of the region around the Town of Rising Sun. That's not our intent, and you're gonna see in our Comprehensive Plan that despite what the county has publicly been saying, we are doing the exact opposite of what they are saying we are doing. And in many cases, we're actually preserving and doing, improving upon the stewardship that the county put forth in 2019. that the county put forth in 2010 in their comprehensive plan about preserving the rural character of the area. For instance, we are creating green belts in the areas where we are talking about growth. We are creating green belts that are different from open space. Open space is typically, if a developer comes in and has a 20-acre piece of ground that they want to develop, there would be a requirement to maintain a certain amount of open space. But there's really nothing concretely saying where that open space has to be. We've taken it one step further. In addition to adopting the very same open space requirements that the county is doing in the areas it potentially could annex into the town in the future, we have taken areas that, by looking at a GIS satellite imagery, are ponds and streams and large water bodies, large swaths of trees. And we are saying, we want that to be a green belt. So in other words, that means if somebody had 20 acres of ground and five acres was a green belt, they can't maneuver that open space and all that stuff around and start tearing the trees down or getting rid of a body of water, because that's the best place to build the houses or the building that they want to build. We want to make sure that that rural character is maintained, and that is above and beyond what the county is doing. The other thing that you're going to see in our plan that we are doing is there's a thing called a rural legacy and protected lands. And that is basically different funding programs that the state of Marin, in this, germane to this conversation, has created to enable people to give them incentives to keep their land undeveloped, whether it's agricultural rights, rural preservation, rural legacy. They basically can agree to go into an easement on their property, to not develop that property for so many years, in exchange for a reduction in their taxes, as long as they don't tear all the trees down, build a bunch of houses in there, they get that benefit. So the county, a couple months ago, about a year ago, decided to expand upon the rural legacy of Cecil County, and they put that rural legacy right in the growth area of the town of Rising Sun. Now, what I mean by that is, I said earlier, the town of Rising Sun already has a comprehensive plan. It's had a comprehensive plan for many years. Within that comprehensive plan, there are growth areas, there are things that are planned for. They should not have had, the county should not have come in to our areas that the state says we can create, and just sort of overrun that and put rural legacy in those areas. And originally, the town of Rising Sun was concerned about that, but when we found out that it is voluntary in nature, and again, given the fact that we do not want to change the rural landscape of the community, it's very important for people to hear, if a farmer wants to take advantage of the rural legacy of their area, the town of Rising Sun has no issue with that. We have filed no formal complaint with the Department of Natural Resources to have the rural legacy areas taken out of our growth areas, even though we could make an argument to do that, because we don't have an issue with farmers wanting to maintain their land, or anybody for that matter, wanting to put it into some kind of preservation. It's voluntary. And the thing that's important to note is there is a lot of land that is in rural legacy and rural conservation, and if you were to look at a lot of these farmland lands, those farmers or property owners have not acted upon those tax incentives, because they would be locking their properties up, sometimes for 15 years, 20 years, 30 years, depending upon the program, and they would never be able to develop it. And so an example of where someone might choose not to take advantage of that is a farmer who, although they might be third, fourth, fifth generation of farmers, they know that their children do not want to farm anymore. And so the value of their land becomes that farmer's retirement, and they want to be able to sell that land in the future. And if they put it in rural legacy or MAF or any of the other programs, they will, it actually decreases the value of the land, so that if they were to sell it, they can't get as much as if it wasn't in those rural legacy or rural conservation or MAF program areas. So the proof is in the pudding that although rural legacy has been here for a long time, and the county's had rural conservation areas, not all, a good number of the property owners are not acting upon it, because they don't want to give up the value of their land. The other thing that is something that a landowner has to take into consideration, if you're a farmer, a lot of times, when you go to plant your crops, or buy your livestock, or buy your equipment, you need to take out loans. And so you put collateral up, which is typically your property for that collateral. If you are in a, one of those conservation areas, and a lending institution knows that you cannot sell the land for what maybe a property across the street could sell the land, that it's not in the program, that hypothetically can impact your ability, as a farmer, to get the financing that you need to buy your equipment, buy your livestock, buy your seeds or whatever that you're going to be planting. So it is a wonderful program, make no bones about it, and the town of Rising Sun fully supports that program. But there has to be options for people who, in their own rights, have decided they don't want to act upon those programs. So that's just some of the examples of what we are doing. The other example that you're going to find in our document is that when we started talking about expanding the town limits, first of all, there's a misnomer out there that if the town of Rising Sun runs water and sewer in front of somebody's property, they are going to be required to annex into the town. That is not correct. The county has tried to take the position of citing a state law to that extent. We have gotten an opinion letter from a gentleman, Michael Powell, who was the lead counsel for MDE for about four years. He worked in the State Attorney General's office for six years. He was a lead counsel for MDE, and he has given us an opinion letter that that section of the state law does not apply to what we are doing. We also got an opinion letter from Mr. Robert Summers, who was the Secretary of MDE for about, I think, two and a half, three years, and was the Director of Water Resources for many, many years before that. He has also agreed with the opinion letters that the town of Rising Sun running water and sewer beyond its incorporated limits does not require people to connect to it, and it doesn't require them to annex into the town. Annexation is another concept that's important to talk about here. You're going to see in the document that we have to show our growth area, and we have to show an annexation plan. The town of Rising Sun is showing areas that could be annexed in the future, but the important thing is, we are not going to go and make people annex into the town. The value of them annexing is, if you recall, a couple years ago, the town of Northeast ended up having to appear before the Marin Public Utilities Commission, because there was a dispute between the town of Northeast and Cecil County, and it had to do with the out-of-town rates that are charged to properties that are not in the incorporated limits of a town. And under the state guidelines in the Marin Public Utilities Commission guidelines, anyone that is not within the incorporated limits of a town but receives sewer and water must pay twice as much as the incorporated, the residents in the incorporated towns. Now, there's a couple nuances that would probably come into play, but the way it stands right now, that's anyone who were to get water and sewer from the town of Rising Sun, for whatever reason they needed it, if they did not annex into town, we would have to charge them double the amount. And so if you're dealing with somebody with a failing septic or a failing well, their cost could go up a great deal if they had to connect to the town of Rising Sun for water and/or sewer and had to pay the over, twice the amount. We've done calculations, and in most cases, a property owner annexing in the town will pay less in additional town tax than they will pay in having to pay double the amount for water and sewer. So we're trying to give people a price point break. If they were to need to get water and sewer from the town of Rising Sun, they would have the option of annexing. Now, let's talk about another important point of the comprehensive plan. If you remember, I talked about the pyramid, and the comprehensive plan is at the top of that pyramid. If you don't have something in your comprehensive plan, there's a good chance that down the road, something's going to come up, and you're going to want to be able to do it, but you're not going to be able to do it, because it's not in the comprehensive plan. Case in point would be, if we had somebody beyond our town limits that had a failing septic or a failing well, and they wanted to get water and sewer from the town of Rising Sun, if we don't show them in our growth area, in our annexation area, and if we don't show them in our water and sewer service area of our comp plan, then they can't connect to us until we go through the long process of redoing our comprehensive plan again. And so when you see some of the maps, when we go over some of the maps, sometimes there's a knee-jerk reaction to say, wow, look at all that area that's affected. Think of them as placeholders, to give people options, property owners' options, and the town options, to be able to do the right thing, to help somebody that's in an environmental issue, without having to have significant delays by having to redo the master sewer and water plan. The other important point to talk about what we tried to do with the county is, when you talk about doing a growth area, we, wanting to be sensitive to what the county has already done, you're going to see that we are proposing to adopt commits, that's the important thing, commit in our comprehensive plan that if somebody annexes into our town, they will annex about 98% of the time to the very same zoning that the county already has in place. That's unusual, because a comprehensive plan does not require a municipality to necessarily designate what its zoning is going to be. The comprehensive plan, the laws will require a municipality to say, we're going to annex a general area, and it's going to be predominantly residential, or it's going to be industrial, or it's going to be commercial, whatever it is, they can make a broad-stroke statement and not have to commit to the zoning until the property actually annexes. We are tying our hands, to some degree, and committing to adopting the very same zoning designations that the county has. So when people accuse the town of Rising Sun of drastically, you know, trying to change the rural landscape of Cecil County through this plan, it's just not true. We are committing to adopting their zoning designations. We're going to show you a couple areas where we have made some changes, and those are predominantly in and around bordering on the town of Rising Sun itself. But in both cases, you're going to see that we are actually drastically reducing the density of what could be built on those properties. So again, if those properties were to annex in the town, they might have to make a decision of, I have this type of zoning in the county. It says I could build this number of buildings, or houses, or intensity of use, but I need water and sewer from the town of Rising Sun, because what, I want to develop to some degree, and I really can't do it without public water and sewer, or I have a health and safety issue, and I want to connect. In some of those cases, the zoning would be reduced to mitigate the impact of what we've come to love, is the rural character of the Cecil County area around Rising Sun. So you're going to see in that map some significant reductions of that, again, which is evidence to the point that the town of Rising Sun is not trying to change the rural character of the Cecil County area. And the other thing that's important to note, and it's important for us to lay our cards on the table here, is a couple of years ago, Cecil County decided to get out of the business of water, for the most part, and they sold all of their water infrastructure, almost all of it, to Artesian Water out of Delaware, which is a for-profit entity, that if they can charge what they want for water and sewer, and if they get the approvals for water, in this case, they can charge what they want through water, through the Public Utilities Commission, if it gets approved. The constituents don't have a voice in that, as they do in incorporated limits of towns. You can vote people out, you can run for office, make changes in the rate structure at the local level, with the exception only if the incorporated municipality controls the water and sewer. In this case, the county has sold all of those rights to Artesian Water. The other thing that's important to note is, when a municipality wants to control the land development of their community, in other words, we want to be able to say, we don't want 1,000 houses there, and we're not going to give you the water and sewer for 1,000 houses. Artesian, hypothetically, being a for-profit entity, could say, hey, we'll give you enough water for 1,000 homes. And so at the local level, you start to lose control of how you can plan your community, because you don't have that golden key, the most valuable asset, which is the water and sewer. So that's what the town of Rising Sun is attempting to do, is you're going to see in our mapping where we are essentially asking for a franchise area. And that doesn't necessarily mean that we are going to provide water and sewer to those franchise areas. It just means that we have a right of first refusal in order to do that. And what I mean is, the town of Rising Sun has taken the position that it's not fair that Cecil County has essentially positioned a for-profit entity to be a direct competitor to the publicly owned water and sewer system. That's a scary proposition. So when you start to go back to the idea of why the county is blocking our comprehensive plan, why they have language in their code that says you can't extend water and sewer with the county executive, without the county executive's approval, it puts the incorporated towns of Northeast, Perryville, Charlestown, Chesapeake City, Elkton, ourselves, at a disadvantage, because the county can determine to not allow, the county's taking the position of saying, you can't extend your water and sewer, but in the same token, they have sold all their water rights to the for-profit entity. And it might sound really extravagant and extreme, but it is a reality, and it's very important that the town of Rising Sun, you know, position ourselves so that we do not fall victim to that, for all the reasons that I just mentioned above. So you're going to see a franchise area in your mapping that is very similar to a franchise area that was awarded to the town of Northeast. And if you were to go east to, or west to east on 40, as you know, you have the town of Perryville, Charlestown, Northeast, and Elkton, all lining up on that corridor. There was an area that was in dispute between Northeast and Artesian, and Northeast was able to get the county to agree to give them, basically, a non-compete franchise area that Elkton or anybody else can't come into. Northeast gets a right of first refusal. That's all we're asking for. That's all we are asking for, is to be treated the same way. So, you know, that's a summary of the beachhead that we're trying to create here, is we just, we want to be able to exercise our rights under the state law as a sovereign entity, and we want to be afforded the same rights that all the other incorporated towns of Cecil County have been given, to move their water and sewer beyond their town limits, to grow their towns, to incorporate other areas, to improve their economic user, economic base for the benefit of everybody. So I know that's a long snapshot of the reason why we're here, but that's why this has taken essentially two and a half years to get this done. So with that, I'd like to just move right into the comprehensive plan amendments here. And what you're going to have in your document is, the items that are in black are from the original 2010 plan. original 2010 plan. The items that are in red are either updates of language, a better way of wording it, or changes in demographics, totals, numbers, or whatever. So you just have your basic history of the Town of Rising Sun, the legal basis for the comprehensive plan. If you look on page one, at the bottom of page one, you see, remember I mentioned Article 66B was replaced by the land use article, the one and the same, so we needed to update It goes on to basically, the language that you have in here is, look at it as enabling language to do everything that I just talked about, to make sure that our community is sustainable going forward. That's what this whole exercise is about, is to put that language in the proper sections, to get it approved, so then we can control our own destiny and provide for our residents in a better manner. So, again, there's copies of this at Town Hall. 2009, there were some initiatives that were created by the Department of Planning in the state about smart green and growing planning legislation. There's some language in there that we, you know, we need to address in our comp plan. The Planning Commission must submit its, submit a five-year implementation report to MDP every five years, so that's the amendments to the comprehensive plan, correct?
No, it's, your plan has recommendations, implementation recommendations, and the five-year plan asks you, how have you done to achieve those? Have you done all, done some of them, sort of, kind of a checkup?
Again, you see a lot of language, and we've just, you know, worded it differently, changed some acronyms in there. We, one of the things we had to do was update all our maps. If you can imagine, in 2010, we were right in the middle of the sewer and water moratorium, so we didn't have anything going on. And so we have really outdated maps, and so throughout this document, we make references to these maps, and all the maps can be found at the end of Chapter Five, I believe, under the municipal growth element is where all the maps are at. So you start to talk about the planning analysis in Chapter Two, and there's some interesting data here, population trends here. 1990, the population in Cecil County was 71,347. The Rising Sun election district was 7,196, and the Town of Rising Sun was 1,263. You go all the way up to the 2010 census, and you can see that our population has jumped to 2,781, and the county's population has gone from 71 to 101, basically 30,000 more people, and the Rising Sun election district has gone up another 3,000. The thing that's interesting, and you've heard us talk about it at meetings, Rising Sun is a very desirable place to be. If you recall at the last meeting, I talked about Mayor Zane from Cecilton, who is a Cecil County realtor, was talking about, you know, people want to be up north in the Town of Rising Sun area, or down in the Chesapeake City Cecilton area. Not everybody wants to be in the hustle and bustle of 4095. The jobs are there, but that doesn't necessarily mean they want to live there. And so what you can see, the Town of Rising Sun's population, despite being in a water and sewer moratorium, has grown at a faster rate, essentially, than what the county or the election district did. This here is the old chart that had to be removed and taken out. Population projections. In 2015, the population for Cecil County was 102,450. The Town of Rising Sun was estimated to be about 2,800. If you fast-forward to 2020, you can see that the county is projected to be at 1,04,600,000, and Rising Sun is projected to be at 2,859. That will probably be impacted by the fact that we now, you know, don't have the sewer and water moratorium hanging over us. So the next time we do our plan, it'll be interesting to see if those numbers still hold true. Here's some interesting thing, information, age and education. The median age for Rising Sun in 2017 was 33.6 years of age, as compared to the median age of 40.3 years of age for Cecil County, and 35.3 for the United States. So the Town of Rising Sun tends to have a younger, younger people living in the Town of Rising Sun, and I think that's, that's born out of people wanting to relocate. As we all know, most people who are relocating, moving through jobs, are probably between the ages of 20 and 40 years of age for job relocations, better schools, whatever. See, you know, that, that sort of bears itself out in the population, or the age of the population Population by age, Rising Sun, this is always interesting. There's 130 residents under the age of five, 4.6% compared to 5.7% in the county. To get up to some of the other, our seniors, let's look at our seniors, there are, over the age of 75, there's 98 reported residents over the age of 75, which makes up 3.5% of our population. The county has 5,603, which makes up 5.5% of the county's population. So again, you can see why the numbers are supporting a relatively younger constituency here, living in the Town of Rising Sun. 2017, the American Community Survey, ACS is the acronym, estimated that 71.7% of the population 16 years of age or over residing in Rising Sun was included in the labor force. Over half of the employed workforce was involved in management, professional-related occupations or sales and occupations. So you start to see the labor force in Maryland, the labor force in Cecil County, and the labor force in Rising Sun. You can see that although we have a fair number of people that are in the labor force, we also have some people that are unemployed, probably a slightly higher percentage of unemployed in the Town of Rising Sun, based upon 2017 numbers. You might ask yourself, why is this stuff important? When a community uses its comprehensive plan, there's a wealth of information that can, you know, you can start crafting programs and initiatives and figure out rate structures and taxes and all you, it gives you a good snapshot of the constituents you are serving so that you can make better decisions to improve the services to those constituents. Here again are some more charts on that. Here is a breakdown of employee population over the age of 16 by industry, and I'm on, heading into page five. You can start to see what number are employed in the Town of Rising Sun in the particular industries in question. Here is the income levels. In 2017, the median household income for Rising Sun was 17% below that of Cecil County, and 31% below per capita income for the state. So you start to see persons living in poverty. In the Town of Rising Sun, they are below the median household income of 6,240. There are 278 people living in that threshold, which represents 9.9% of the total population, which again is, is higher than Cecil County, and slightly higher than the state of Maryland, based upon population. Again, all this stuff is in here, it's a lot of great information. You have on page 17, you start to talk about the housing characteristics of the community. The total housing units in Rising Sun are 716. The total number in Cecil County are 34,461. There are 681 of those properties are occupied housing units, making up 95%, where the county has 90.6% of its housing is occupied. Owner-occupied in the Town of Rising Sun represents 59.5% of the total housing stock is owner-occupied, and in the county, 75% of the housing stock is owner-occupied. And specific renter-occupied units are 40.5, and in the county, it's 25.0. And in Rising Sun, the housing stock, of the housing stock, 4.9% of it is listed as vacant, where in the county, 9% of the housing stock is listed as vacant. Here's an important statistic that we've talked about for many, many years. There have been studies that have been conducted that talk about when a municipal jurisdiction starts to get rental housing units above 33, 34%, you start to have various types of issues that start to occur, whether it be frustration between owner-occupied people and renters, and renters who might not have the same conviction to take care of the property as owner-occupied. There's a lot of great renters out there, renters are very important to a community, but you start to get into thresholds that, when you read the tea leaves, can be the reasons why you start to have issues. So if the standards are basically 33, 34, 35%, you can see that the Town of Rising Sun is, is already at 40.5%. And you can follow that in the increase in the number of property maintenance complaints that we get here, that more often, a great number of them are renter-occupied properties, that people are letting the grass grow, junk cars, you know, junking up the property. Again, that's not a statement that renters are bad, it's just you start to incur problems when your rental base gets to be a little bit too high. So that's some supporting documentation. I'm going to jump over to Chapter Three, the public process. This again is all based out of the 2010 plan, so you're not really seeing a whole lot of changes in it, other than the highlighted yellow area is just referencing a new map that replaced a previous map. Here are the goals and policies that come out of the comp plan, you know, growth management. To achieve the spirit and intent of the following eight visions, that's what this comp plan is designed to do. One is development to be concentrated in suitable areas, sensitive areas to be protected, and rural areas, growth is directed to existing population centers, and resources are protected. Stewardship of the Chesapeake Bay and the land is a universal ethic. Conservation of resources, including a reduction in resource consumption is practiced. Economic growth is encouraged, and regulatory mechanisms are streamlined. Adequate public facilities and infrastructure under the control of the town are available or planned in areas where growth is to occur. And funding mechanisms are addressed to achieve these visions. So that goes back to what I talked about at the beginning. We're designating a lot of green belt, we're protecting land, we're respecting the rural legacy, we're not letting people tear down trees. Those are all how we're trying to achieve those eight objectives that are mentioned there. The plan then goes into talking about residential, commercial, open space, natural resources, land use objectives, residential land use objectives. This is a 134-page document, so I don't plan on reading every single sentence here, just sort of blowing through these. An important point on page 24, when we talked about incorporating the same zoning that the county has, and I'm going to show you a table in a second. The county has what is called NAR, which is Northern Agricultural Residential zoning. And generally speaking, the county requires 10 acres for every house, or every residential property that is built. Now, there are some caveats in there, but for the most part, that's a steadfast rule. The Town of Rising Sun has created a new zoning designation that will show up in our zoning code called rural estates. Because the Town of Rising Sun really doesn't have any agricultural in your areas, because think of it this way, from a, from a business standpoint, the only way the Town of Rising Sun can provide the concentrated services that you get right now is to have properties that have good tax value. So it would be very unusual for incorporated towns to have agricultural zoned areas, because the bottom line is the tax revenue makes it very difficult to sustain services for your residents, so it's unusual for an incorporated town to have agricultural zoned areas. So in order to achieve the same density that the county has, one house per 10 acres, the town just simply created a rural estate with the idea of having fairly good-sized houses on large pieces of land, which bear in mind, if you've ever sold your house, or wanted to get a home equity loan, and somebody comes around and does an appraisal of your property, your property is negatively or positively impacted by the assessed value or the appraised value of the properties around you. So what the Town of Rising Sun does, a good mixture of affordable housing, mid-level housing, small houses, big houses, townhouses, you know, expensive houses, that all goes into the formula to bring the overall value of properties up, which you've heard us talk about before. To a residential property owner, their biggest bargaining chip in life is the value of their property. So if they want to pay for their daughter's wedding, or their son's wedding, or they have a new kid coming and they need to put an addition on their house, or they want to buy a boat, a vacation house, whatever it is they want to do, the value of their home is typically their bargaining chip. So it behooves, it behooves us to do everything we can to maintain the value of these properties, and to come up with ways to increase the value of those properties. So creating a rural estate, which is inviting 10-acre pieces of ground with good value houses on it, actually pulls the values up of everybody's properties in the community. So this is where you're talking about the town creating this rural estate. And basically, what this says is create residential estate, RE, zone that preserves the rural nature and intent of the county's Northern Agricultural Residential zoning district, and identify future green belt areas in the town's designated growth area. So there's one of our steps in incorporating what the county's doing and preserving the rural nature. The other thing that the town is doing is the county has a zoning designation called rural residential, RR. And essentially, in the rural residential, you can have one house per three acres. Currently, in the town zoning, our zoning is typically R1, which is one house per two acres, or two houses per acre, R2, which could be four houses per acre, and R3, which could be a whole lot of properties, townhouses, apartments, whatever. We don't have an R3. We don't have that mid-range between the rural estate that we're creating, one house per 10 acres, and our four houses per one acre, or two houses per acre. So we're going to incorporate the county's RR zoning district into our zoning code so that, again, we can maintain the rural character of Cecil County, which should not be a threat to Cecil County, while also providing more diversity in housing. I'm now going to go on to the next chapter here. We talk about open space. This is where the town is reserving open space and creating all kinds of green belts around the Town of Rising Sun, that's the language that talks about it. That's the language that talks about it. Our transportation guidelines that are in our comprehensive plan basically remain the same, with the exception of we want to encourage connectivity by requiring new collector and arterial streets and areas designated for future residential growth and employment. This is, this is germane to the frustration our residents have on an evening here in Rising Sun, or a Saturday or Sunday, or any other busy time where you crawl through the incorporated limits of the town of Rising Sun. Because of, to some degree, there's one or two ways in and out of town. So any future development in the future, it would be, it's a goal of the planning commission to work with a developer to try to get that traffic to either go on other roads or to create collector roads to bypass that traffic coming into the downtown area of Rising Sun. So that's a feature that we added here was again, to try to improve upon the traffic flow in the town of Rising Sun. Here's an example. It suggests a new minor, and I'm on page 33. A new minor collector road should be considered in the proposed employment district, EC, to extend Greenmont Road and Little New York Road to Stevens Road to provide a secondary outlet and low traffic volumes and emergency access. So there's a couple examples here where we're talking about creating these collector roads. But another zoning district that we are creating here is called an employment center. And it's not something, it's not something that the county directly has as a zoning, but the county does have things called enterprise zones. And in enterprise zones, they are designed to attract certain development in those areas. So what the town of Rising Sun is looking to do is to take the Route One corridor, Conawingo Road, and change that zoning to employment center. If you remember a couple of years back, there was a land development application for like, I think, 224 residential homes on the Wellington Manor site at Red Pump Road and Route One, which, you know, didn't make a whole lot of sense. Because it's basically putting residential development on the other side of Route One. And we've always talked about the fact that, you know, little Johnny can't get on his bike and ride over to a town park because he'd have to cross Route One. So it's just from a planning standpoint, doesn't really make sense to encourage new residential development on the other side of Route One. So what we're looking to do is to try to jumpstart our economic development here is to create an employment center. And in that employment center, we would give incentives to developers who come in and create commercial entities that provide good paying jobs, not, not minimum wage jobs, but good paying jobs that if a certain number of jobs are created based upon the total square footage of the building they want to build, they can increase that square footage by the number of good paying jobs that they create. We could also put language in there. Let's hypothetically say that somebody creates 50 good jobs of $40,000, $50,000 a year plus, an IT center, whatever. Something that could come out there on the Route, the Route One corridor. Let's say they created 50 of those jobs. If they guarantee that over a five-year period or a 10-year period, that 25% of those jobs, or whatever that number is, must be filled by a resident in the incorporated limits of the town of Rising Sun, they again can get incentives to be able to create those jobs. And so it's sort of a trickle-down economics equation that we're trying to create to get good paying jobs in our community and to make sure those good paying jobs are offered to our residents first. So it's a lot of thinking outside the box. But that's the idea behind the employment center zoning that we are creating. On the top of page 34, you see where we're talking about maintaining forested areas, steep slopes and floodplain areas for open space, and regional stormwater management and future green belts here. Moving on to, all this language is pretty much standard. The other thing that we're doing on page 38 is the town has always had a PUD, or Planned Unit Development. Although it wasn't really refined and no one really acted on it, we wanted to freshen up the whole PUD concept. So what you're seeing here is that a large property could, a large property of 75 acres, of which no more than 15% or 20 acres, whichever is less, shall be designated as neighborhood convenience center. And so the whole idea behind a PUD is to incorporate other little ancillary things that help support the residential development. It could be an accounting, you know, an accounting office. It could be, you know, maybe a, you know, a drugstore. Those are the kind of things that the planning commission has to clearly define what will go in those PUD areas. But that's the concept behind it, is to attract services to those areas in exchange for a greater density of building as long as they maintain the required open space. So it's a trade-off to do something creative on larger pieces of land that benefit the town of Rising Sun. Moving through the document, Chapter Four, Land Use. This is going to be a lot of referencing the various maps that were created. Here's some existing land use in 2009 in the town of Rising Sun. There's a total of 1,040 acres. You can see the two acres or less of, basically 0.4% is very low density residential. Industrial is 16 acres. Forest is 124 acres. Water, bodies of water is 17 acres. Wetlands is 17 acres. So that's basically the general makeup of our land, the 1,040 acres of the town of Rising Sun. We start to talk about the predominantly single-family district, what the intent is in those single-family districts. You can see here on page 44, I'm going to highlight it on the screen. Because we created the RR zoning district and the rural estate zoning district, we needed to incorporate that language into this particular section here. So again, it's just, it's adding language to concepts that we're trying to incorporate. There are a couple of properties that the elected body decided should be zoned differently, or if those properties were to, in some cases, ever, well, these are properties that are in-town limits that are, have these odd zoning. And real quickly, when the planning experts get together, it makes no sense to have what is called pocket zoning or enclaves, so to speak. And so what that means is there are some areas where, in our town, where we have things that are zoned a certain way and there will be a house right in the middle of it that's zoned something totally different. And that is counterintuitive to the idea of planning having a nice even flow. In other words, you don't want an industrial area right up against a residential area. So you, you would, in your planning, would create sort of transitional zones in between. But what the town has done over the years, and it's probably born out of, the town at one time being very open to somebody coming in and saying, "I just want to change the zoning of this particular property." And the town changes it, and they create this pocket zoning. And that can lend itself to a lot of problems. So there's a couple of properties here that we are proposing to change the zoning of those properties because they look the same as the other properties, but for whatever, they're the same size, they're used the same way. But we just want to eliminate the zoning irregularities. And where that could be important for the property owner is every zoning district has different setback requirements. So you could hypothetically be living in the middle of a block and your house is zoned different. And when you go to put an addition on the back of your house, you have to get a variance because your house is zoned differently than the houses around you. And so this, it's another example of creating better uniformity between similar properties so that they are zoned the same way. So again, the comprehensive plan is the pyramid, the top of the pyramid. Putting the language in here enables the planning commission and the Board of Commissioners to adopt a new zoning map that takes care of those items. Pretty much now, oh, the other zoning district we created is an old town center. Old town commercial. The town of Rising Sun, back in the day, essentially only adopted two types of commercial properties. One being central commercial and one being like commercial or limited commercial, depending upon what section of the zoning code you referenced here. But it, if you recall, I just talked about properties not being zoned properly, which trigger people having to spend unnecessary money and spend valuable time getting variances to do things on their property that other properties would be able to normally do. And so a good example of that is a central commercial area is typically an area where you're going to put your supermarkets or your big commercial businesses. But yet, we have the downtown area of Rising Sun previously listed as central commercial. And as a result, most of those properties are what are called non-conforming uses. So when, yeah, non-conforming properties and non-conforming uses. Which means when they want to come in and maybe build a little bit bigger or a little bit taller, or do something a little bit different, they have to unnecessarily come in and spend money and time to get variances and special exceptions to do that. Because when the town created its zoning code, it tried to basically just do an overlay or one size fits all. And it created irregularities in the zoning code. So what the town, what the planning commission has done is taking the downtown area and change the zoning to old town commercial. The definition and the description sort of meets the old town feel. It enables us to change minimum sizes. For instance, in the central commercial area, you have to have a certain size lot in order to build. And all these lots on the main street area, most of them do not conform to that zoning. So any kind of economic development or renewal that wants to take place is going to run into unnecessary roadblocks as a result. So by changing the zoning to old town commercial in those areas, it alleviates the burden on property owners to do what is reasonable with their properties from a development standpoint. I want to jump now to the end of Chapter Five. This talks about, you know, future municipal territorial growth areas and the different things that we're trying to do in those growth areas. For the essence of time, I'm going to blow through these and get right to the maps that I've been referring to over and over again. Dave, when I'm done this portion, if there's anything you think that I've missed that we should cover in those areas, feel free to bring that up. Here's something that we did, extraterritorial service obligations. The language originally said, as a general rule, the town would not extend service in the future areas that are not within town or annexed. Again, to fit the idea, and I'm on the top of page, it looks like we have a number glitch here. In your document, it should be at page 10. I'm just realizing we have a number glitch at the bottom there. We have changed it to say, as a general rule, the town will offer annexation to future service areas that are not within town as a method of reducing consumption charges as required for out-of-town customers. So that's where we're putting that enabling language to be able to help people with the cost of connecting to the water and sewer by allowing them to annex into town. The town may also enter into bulk purchase arrangements with other water service providers if prudent and beneficial to the town. It is an underlying mission, and it makes sense, for regionalization of water and sewer services. And for the purposes of redundancy, if there are other water service providers, whether they be private sector or public sector, we wanted to make sure that our comprehensive plan gave us the ability to enter into an agreement in the future if it was prudent to do so. If we did not have that language in there, then somebody would come along with a great idea. We should hook up with XYZ town or XYZ provider. And then we'd say, oh, we can't do it because we've got to redo our comprehensive plan. So this is basically a placeholder in there to do that. Another thing that's important to note is when we talk about somebody being able to annex, they have to be in our comprehensive plan right now as part of the future growth area in the annexation plan. And that's why our annexation map covers a big area, but it's a what-if scenario so that we are in a position to do it. If there was a need to provide water or sewer to somebody, let's say tomorrow, that's not in that annexation plan or growth area, even though this says we can offer annexation to them, we would still have to come back and change our comprehensive plan, specifically the map, to reflect that in a growth area and an annexation plan. So it's important to make sure that people understand that portion of it. At the bottom of that, page 12 here. And let me just ask this question. I don't know if this is a byproduct of me copying it onto this page. Dave, is it, is it page 12 where that key is on yours?
No, 68.
It is 68. So it does appear to be following the numbers. When it got copied up here, it changed the formatting. So this basically is a zoning key, which basically is listing all the zoning in Cecil County here on the left-hand side that is part of the areas that the town would potentially grow in and annex in the future. And so over here, you see the type of zoning that will be used to bring those properties in. So that does not mean that all NAR, Northern Agricultural Residential, is going to come in as RE, rural estate. I did say previously, we created the RE to match the NAR. But there are some areas of NAR around Route One that we're going to turn into an employment center. So there is not a direct correlation left to right on these keys. It's just listing the type of zoning that's involved in this comprehensive plan. And then there's a map 2A, which we're going to address, that's going to talk about an annexation plan where some of the properties are zoned a certain way in the county. If they were to annex in, we are proposing to change the zoning. And in some cases, it would require a waiver of zoning from the county in order to do that. So we're, again, that's part of our commitment and assurance to the county that we're trying to be a partner with preserving the rural character by committing to what the zoning is going to be. So here are some of those properties. There are 11 properties that are going to have the zoning changed to clearly decrease the intensity that is permitted on the property. And so in these particular areas, these 11 properties, and it's a long Route One, a couple on Telegraph Road. Calvert Manor Facility is an entity that is asked to get water and sewer from the town in order for them to annex in. We need to show them in our comp plan. And so the total number of acres in which we are taking the county's zoning and basically reducing the reducing the intensity and density is 752, 752.92 acres. And some of this area is already in the town limits. So when you take the acres that are already in the town's comp plan or are designated as greenbelt, you take 548.9 of those acres off the books. And that means that only 204.02 acres are being negatively impacted by basically a reduction of what they could do on the property, a change from the county's perspective. But that also means that the number of EDUs that can be developed on the property is reduced by 92. So that basically means in all the land that we're saying could annex into the town, if people are concerned, if they are concerned about us changing the demographics and the housing stock in the county, this is evidence of an example of where we're actually reducing it. The next table is where, is where, and actually, I'm sorry, the first table is we are increasing, we would be increasing the intensity, but the change in EDU is reducing it to 92 less properties. The next table here is where we are changing the zoning, but we will, we will not need a variance, a waiver, a zoning waiver from the county when it comes time for those properties to annex in. And that is a total of 1,385 acres of ground in the county that we are proposing to change the zoning to reduce the intensity, reduce the density, which if, if those properties were to stay in the county and reach their fullest development potential, at the very least, they could build 836 more residential properties than what we would be allowing. Now, I talked earlier about some of the county's zoning having some caveats where you could do a little bit more in certain circumstances. So the, the minimum amount of reduction is 836 residential properties. The maximum amount, according to the county's zoning now, is 3,679 residential units. So if you are approached on the street by a naysayer saying that the town of Rising Sun is trying to drastically change the rural character of Cecil County, it is absolutely not true. And the numbers bear it out by the reductions that we are trying to do. We are looking to reduce that negative impact, the perceived negative impact, by either 836 residential units or 3,679 residential units. So that's a very important table to mention here. The maps that you see here, these are actually strike-through maps. Those are from the old comp plan. So when we, if this plan is adopted and approved, those maps will accept the changes and those maps will come out. So here's an interesting point. If you remember in the master sewer and water plan, and I'm at the top of, Dave, I'll rely on you to tell me what page I'm at now, a new enhanced nutrient removal, or Dave, if you have it.
75.
This is what is frustrating with the county in terms of the potential partnership that we are trying to build with them. Any economic development that the town of Rising Sun spearheads, the county gets a direct benefit from that without having to hypothetically spend one dime in doing it. In other words, we are a little economic engine here that can improve the economic status of the county. Now, what the county were correct in their assumption that there is to be no economic development in and around the town of Rising Sun, that you could understand why they are opposed to our plan. But if their zoning code already allows the development that we already talked about and we're looking to reduce it, then why would they be opposed to any increase in economic development when their plan is already allowing for that economic development and we're actually reducing it to some degree? Furthermore, there are areas in our plan, in our master sewer and water plan, where the county has documented locations of failing wells and failing septic. And in the county's comprehensive plan and in the county's master sewer and water plan, one of their tasks is to address those failing water and sewer areas. Our plan proposes to address that for them. We are the closest resource, but for whatever reason, the county is blocking that and won't allow that to happen. So in essence, you have these health and safety issues that are identified by MDE and by Cecil County that hypothetically, if everything stands the way it is right now, no one will be able to help those properties. And that's, that's illogical. It doesn't make any sense. So the other benefit to that is that under state law, when the town opened up its new wastewater treatment plant, there are certain things that we are charged with removing from the wastewater. And the county gets a benefit to that because they have a menu from the state and federal government that they are obligated to reduce these things countywide in, in some cases. So when you take failing septic systems offline, you are essentially giving a direct benefit to Cecil County, but the town of Rising Sun is paying for it. So it's another example of where it just make, doesn't make any sense for the county to want to stop us from being able to extend sewer services, especially to areas that have failing septic on them. And we are highlighting these in our comprehensive plan. Again, these are, the thing that's interesting here about this, this is a map from 1990, and you've seen it before in the other presentations, where this area right here is basically the town of Rising Sun. And the county previously called for growth all the way past West Nottingham Academy. It called for growth to go out to Silmar, yeah, out, out, yeah, out past Stevens Road here. But all we're trying to do now is act upon that, and again, the county is blocking it. Now let's get into the maps because this is what everything that I've been talking about now gets captured in the maps themselves. So let me shrink the size down a little bit so people can see on the video, is this is our designated growth area. And again, this is what we are responsible to do. The county's not charged with doing this. The town of Rising Sun is charged with doing this. And so what you have is the red, the gray area outlined in red is the current town limits. The green area is where we propose to grow in the future. Doesn't mean that everybody's going to annex in, which is capturing properties that we know have documented health and safety issues so that if we can resolve them, they can annex into town and do it a lot cheaper than if they don't annex into town. The thing that's important is going out to 273 corridor. There's always this concern that the town of Rising Sun was trying to explode its incorporated limits, especially out the 273 corridor. And we all know out the 273 corridor in the Calvert and Fairhill area is a lot of the heart and soul of the farmland of northern Cecil County. There's a lot of pristine land out there. This designated growth area out here is only encompassing areas that have reached out to us and have said, we would like to get water and sewer for you, from you. And it's reflected in our master sewer and water plan. Some of those properties requested it because they have failing well or failing septic. Some of them have requested it because they're spending a lot of money per year trying to meet the environmental standards. And they recognize that if water and sewer was out there, over the long run, they would pay a lot less in water and sewer services than trying to hire the staffing and do all the testing that's required on those properties. So this idea that we're trying to explode the Calvert-Fairhill area is not an accurate statement. As you can see, we're pretty much hugging the corridor of 273 and just picking up properties that specifically asked. The other area that's out here is Calvert Regional Park. And I know what the mayor were here, he wanted to make sure that I brought this up. This whole area out here on the far right-hand side is Calvert Regional Park and Rising Sun High School. In the past, we were approached by Cecil County schools about wanting to get water and sewer. In some cases, it's because of struggling to maintain environmental standards and seeing a solution that could be a lot more economical, feasible, feasible. And then the other is the wear and tear on boilers and equipment of having well water. The other reason is one of the schools has had problems with failing septic in the past, and they used all of their available land to put, to upgrade the septic system. Now the school struggles with potential overcrowding and has to bus students out because they don't have available land on that particular school to expand upon the building space. So if they could get off the septic system and argue it can be made that they can expand the facility in the future. So, but the thing that's really frustrating is the Calvert Regional Park. And you've seen from our previous presentations, we went to the county, and there are newspaper clippings that over the past four or five years, there's been articles in the Cecil Wing, two main things. All the money that the county is investing in Calvert Regional Park, there's newspaper articles where they say that the money in Calvert Regional Park will invite thousands of people to Calvert Regional Park and would require upwards of about 3,000 additional hotel rooms. So how do you get that infrastructure or how do you get those services out there? If you're going to have that many people coming to Calvert Regional Park, where are they going to go to stay? Where are they going to eat at? Where are they going to get gas at? The way it stands now, they would potentially have to travel all the way to Northeast or Elkton to be able to get those services. All the town of Rising Sun is saying, let us be a partner at that table, too. Let us get the benefit of that economic development. A good example is the, the county just released a new, a press release this weekend talking about 8,000 lacrosse players coming to Calvert Regional Park this past weekend. They have in their press release, hotels and restaurants, be ready to be real busy. Town of Rising Sun got very little of that because there's no infrastructure out there. So the position the town has always taken is that the county can't, with a straight face, say that there's no expectation of economic development out there and no infrastructure needed to go out there because then how are they supporting 8,000 lacrosse players? How are they supporting all the other events that they say are going to come out there? And I know that Mayor Marion wanted me to bring this up. The mayor has asked on numerous occasions to be able to put signs out at Calvert Regional Park inviting people to the restaurants and coffee shops in the town of Rising Sun, and the county has told him, no, you can't do that. So we're not even allowed to promote our own town. And that's been a, a major sticking point with our mayor. So the reason why we want to get the water and sewer out there is because we want to be a player. If we don't get the water and sewer out there, guess who will? Artesian, the for-profit entity, will be the one to get that. They are a direct competitor to the taxpayers of this community that own the water and sewer system here. So the other thing that the county has been touting is the four-star equestrian event. And you've seen the press clippings on that. There's like only five in the entire world, four-star equestrian events. They have newspaper clippings that say over a three-day period, the other four-star equestrian event attracts like 350,000 people to the event. Here, we already talked about the town, Cecil County's population's only 104,000. So they are, they know what a wonderful economic opportunity that four-star event is going to be. Where are they going to go for the hotels and restaurants? Right now, they're going to go to Newark, Delaware, because Newark, Delaware is sitting three miles up the road from Fairhill International. So Newark, Delaware is saying, hey, thanks for the economic shot in the arm. But yet, the county is touting $30 million of economic impact to the Cecil County area. Why can't the town of Rising Sun have a piece of that economic benefit? And the reason why we can realize that potential is because we have a million gallons of water. And if we're able to sell that water, we could reduce the cost to our own residents. Just a trickle-down economics equation here. So again, how can the county tout $30 million of economic development, 350,000 people coming, hotels, restaurants? Are we really to believe that there will never be any infrastructure ran out there to support it? I think the obvious answer is no. We, we should not believe that. So we're just looking to get out on the, on the 273 corridor to be a player in the economic realm of this. The next map is the annexation plan. And that's where, when we show our growth area, we have to show a phased-in period of properties that would be annexed. So again, the green area is a growth area. Phase one growth, the first phase of the annexation will be in the, the cream-colored area. Phase two growth, which is predominantly out the Route 1 corridor, getting past Ramsey Ford towards the Plopton Park Zoo is a phase two growth area. And a phase three growth area, which is the greenest color, is down-the-road growth, which basically fills in the boundaries of the annexation area. So when you look at some of the colored areas, those again are properties that have specifically asked for water and sewer from us. So we're projecting and showing them as in a phase two growth area or in a phase one annexation area is what I should say. So if you remember that one table where I talked about where we were changing the zoning, that's what this map represents. And it's map 2A, annexation plan involving county zoning waivers. And what this is telling you is the areas that are in the cream color are where we would need a waiver from the county when those properties, if they were to choose to annex into town. So that old proverbial saying that a picture paints a thousand words, when I told you the tables, I gave acreage. But when you look at this, the green area is where we're basically lowering the intensity and the density. And the Canary cream color is where we are increasing it. You can see that the green area is essentially more than the areas where we are changing it. So in, in that entire area, if you remembered, we were reducing the number of houses that can come into that area by over 900 residential connections. So again, when people get concerned about us changing the rural landscape, a picture paints a thousand words. We're taking a big swath of that and saying, if it gets developed under our guidelines, it'll be even less intrusive than what the county zoning code already provides. On this map, you will see also the introduction of the water service area, and that is a franchise area. And basically what we're saying is that in the future, we're not calling for any growth in that area. We're not calling for any annexation right now, but we want the county to give us a franchise area the same way they did to Artesian and the same way they did to Northeast, which means we have a right of first refusal. And the point is, we, we paid for a million gallon asset, remember? We could pay eight and a half million dollars for just the amount of water we needed, or 10 and a half million dollars, another 2 million. another $2 million of investment to more than double the amount of water coming down that line. And it was done with the idea of being able to be a regional provider of water in the area. A case in point, and this elected body knows this. We communicated with the county of our plans dating all the way back to early 2017. We had meetings with them. They knew this was happening. We met with the county executive. The county executive endorsed these ideas. All of a sudden, it's flipped 180 degrees. So this isn't something that got sprung on the county at the last minute. This goes, these conversations are documented in letters going back to 2017. Important thing to note, you have in this, this is reflecting county zoning. The areas that are not color swath here in these areas, we are adopting the county's zoning. So again, the, a picture paints a thousand words. In here, we're gonna propose to change the zoning, but we're reducing the number of houses that can be built. All the other area can be built if they annex into the town, the same density that the county's already allowing there. The land use map, this is where we take the map above and make our commitments to the zoning. And in here, if you remember the zoning key that I referenced, town of Rising Sun zoning, now you start to see all those designated zoning districts and where they would show up. So when you see these large areas of green, which is northern agricultural, which in our zoning code would be rural estate, we'd call it something different, but it would be built to the same density. And when you look at this blue area, that is rural residential, which would match exactly what the county is committing, if you just take a snapshot in your mind of these colors, and I go up to the previous map, you can see where we're adopting, it's the very same zoning that the county has in place already. So again, a picture paints a thousand words. It looks like one of my maps got off here, future water service area. As I talked about previously, that when you do a growth area, you have to talk about how you're gonna provide water to that area. So this map is committing us to a phased-in process of getting water to those areas, but it doesn't mean that every square inch of those areas are gonna get water. It just means we have a consistent polygons, that if somebody comes to us and says, I've got failing wells, or failing, in the next map, failing septic, we can look at our map and say, hey, we can help you out, Mr. Homeowner, because we showed you in our growth area, and we showed water service area going to it. So this basically is, the gray area surrounded by red is the existing water service area. The yellow area is projected water service within two years. And if you see, this is all covering areas of people that have asked in our master sewer and water plan to get water and sewer. It is part of what the town is working on now to extend those water lines to those areas as we speak. The sort of orange-brownish color is two to three years. Now you start to see where, more case in point, the Plopton Park Zoo, which did send us a letter suggesting that if they could get water and sewer in the future, it's not a commitment to do it now, they just wanted to make sure we preserved a placeholder for them, that if they wanted to expand the features they had there, maybe get more animals, more displays, whatever, and if it required sewer and water, they would be able to do that, because we have them covered in our growth area, and we have them covered in our service area. The purple color here is service three to six years, and the red area is six to 10 years, is, is what those areas are. And then you have your municipal growth area, and then your water service area. The one thing I'm realizing that did not show up on this, and it's down here, and I'm, I'm not sure if it showed up on yours, I think it was a copy of mine, there's another, this polygon here should go up here. And it was, this is there because of a comment that came out of the clearinghouse, where MDE got a little bit confused about how we're showing this franchise area, but we're not showing any water and sewer coverage in those areas. So I created a polygon that basically, I'm gonna zoom in for you, is nothing more than a screenshot of the map area, and it basically just says that outer limits of the exclusive Rising Sun Municipal Water Service Area in blue, with services to be provided beyond 10 years. Again, if somebody came to us and said they wanted to get water and sewer, we would have to go back into our comp plan, but the idea is to, to establish a beachhead so that nobody can come in and compete against our taxpayer-paid-for water and sewer system here. We're trying to establish a beachhead. As you can see, there's a couple spelling things that need to be corrected here. The sewer service map is essentially the same thing, same concepts. Instead of saying W1, it's S1 for sewer. So it's all the same concepts. It's showing where hypothetically the sewer would go to. This map here is showing the proposed comprehensive rezoning that we talked about, where we are creating here on the lower left-hand corner. I'm gonna zoom it in so people can see it on the camera. You can see where we created the Old Town Commercial, the Employment Zone, the RR Zone, and that's, that's just what we have in our code right now. When we actually do this comprehensive rezoning map, we're gonna have to add the other zoning places.
Anex those areas first?
Yeah, we would annex them first, that's correct. Those areas would be annexed in. When they annex in, we would have to update our zoning map to reflect that. So this is, we're letting people know how we changed some of the zoning on some of those areas. When you go into the town's existing zoning map, and I'm gonna get this out of the way so it's not quite as confusing, I wanna zoom on, zoom in on this, because this is gonna show you some of the irregularities of the zoning. So it's a little bit blurry, and you can see where there's a color here that's not consistent with the other colors around it. There's a color here on Pearl Street that's not consistent with the other zoning around it. There's some properties down here on Cherry Street that are residential in nature properties, but they're zone central commercial, which creates a lot of heartache for those property owners if they want to do something in the future. So this is our current zoning map, and then this is how we're, if you see those inconsistent colors disappear, and you have a smoother transition from zone to zone. The green belts and open space, I talked about how the town is looking to create green belts and open space. So again, in addition to adopting the county's zoning, if somebody were to annex into town, we're also pre-designating certain areas as green belt and open space. So when I gave you that table earlier, they talked about the reductions. We don't have a table that shows the reductions in, in all the other areas per se, or out, out in the future service areas. So these green swaths here are green belts, where we're looking to preserve the forest and the land and waterways, and we're not gonna let somebody get water and sewer from us just to come in and tear that all out and develop it. So again, it's another example of where the town is, is trying to continue the efforts of the county to preserve the rural nature. There's also the protected lands. If you remember, when I talked about, not all the property owners have taken advantage of protected lands, rural legacy. Essentially, the county has designated the entire northern section of Cecil County as a rural conservation area, and they're saying, all this land is to be conserved. But the black areas represent, over the last decade or two, the number of property owners that have actually taken advantage of that. And this goes back to the reasons I gave earlier on why they might not, at this time, be looking to take advantage of it. But the important point is, in the future, if they want to, the town is not gonna object to that. In other words, we're saying, go ahead and have those rural legacy areas in our growth area. If the property owner wants to do it, they can do it. Then when you start to talk about really conserving the rural nature, this map shows the green belts, the protected areas, and the rural estate, or NAR. So now, when you blow up this map, what this basically is telling you is, all the areas that don't have a color in them are zoned something different in the county. We're gonna adopt that, but as you can see, even if they were to develop in those areas, it's not gonna change the rural character of Cecil County, because we are proposing to adopt the zoning that they have. So all this green, all this black, represents our efforts at preserving the rural character. And I think that is such an important point. People that have been on this elected body in the past, Augie, you being one, know how the anti-growth people would come in here in droves with this concern that the town of Rising Sun was just trying to put concrete everywhere. We're not, and we're making that commitment here in our plan. Implementation, there's really nothing more to go over in that area. The last document that I need to make sure we cover, which is the water resource element, which basically, again, is just updating all the facts and figures regarding our water and sewer capacity that was in our previous plan, that we needed to update it to reflect our new sewer plant and our new water capacity. So this is all pretty much straightforward language there, with tables and graphs that support exactly what we're doing. So I apologize for how long that takes, but we do have public on TV, that this is a good opportunity for them, they weren't able to make the meeting, to really know from A to Z exactly what this plan is all about. So.
Okay. The only comments I have is, if we're putting the planning motion, I did notice some spelling areas. And there are some maps on page 87 and 88 that really need to be, the clarity needs to be improved. Can't really read it even in this context. So other than that, I don't have any other comments or questions for the staff. Joanne or Pauline?
I have none.
Okay, seeing none, and we don't have any citizens here. We had a gentleman from McCrone that indicated to me earlier that he was not going to speak. He just wanted to see what was going on in the town of Rising Sun, from his perspective. So seeing there's no citizens input, is there any deliberation from our planning commission? Or do we have a motion to adopt the amendments?
I'll make a motion to adopt the amendments to the comprehensive plan.
Do you have a second?
Would you want it worded in a special way?
Do you want it worded differently?
Yeah, I, I, you are, you are making a recommendation to the mayor and commissioners to adopt the plan, is what you, what you, is that correct, Dave? That's what they're actually doing?
Okay.
I second that.
Okay. So we, are there any further discussion?
No.
Do we have a vote?
I vote for it.
So the planning commission is, has, three to nothing, has, is going to recommend that the town officials, the town elected body, adopt the amendments as written. Do we have any other, does anybody else have any action?
I have one item, that the annual report for 2018 has been completed and needs to be submitted. And I know, Joanne and Pauline, you've reviewed it earlier in our meeting, make, make a motion to send the report in as written.
I make a motion to send the report in as written.
I'll second that.
And there's no discussion? So, have a vote?
Aye.
I'll, I'll vote for it.
Okay. The vote is three to nothing. So I'd make a recommendation to submit the annual 2018 report to the Maryland Department of Planning. That's the only action item that I have. I guess we need to close our portion of the public hearing. Do we need a motion to do that?
You can or strike the gavel.
Okay.
Your rubber mallet.
My rubber mallet. We're done. It is now turned over to the elected body.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Hibber. Calvin, thanks for going over that in the detail.
Want me to do it again? I said, you want me to do it again?
We'll deliberate on that a little bit, just, but thank you for going over it in such detail. And, and although it was a lengthy presentation, those of us who've served on this board in the past know that the two hours was a culmination of almost two years that the planning committee, and along with you and Dave, have worked on this. Augie, Dave, and myself, who've served on the board before, we only met once a month. Pauline has brought her group together twice a month for quite some time. So the commitment from the planning board to the comprehensive plan is to be applauded, you guys. Thank you so much for all the time you spent on this, because this is a roadmap for the future of the town of Rising Sun, as well as the county. So it's not something to be rushed through. There's a lot of detail to it. There's a lot of back and forth, a lot of, of people's years of life and farming, and then, like you said, some of them have decided to get out of farming and, and go and do different things. And the ability to have the right to do what you want to do with your property, which meets up with the long-range plans of the county and, and the towns and municipalities in Cecil County, is very important, and it's not something to be rushed through. So we appreciate all the time and the detail you went through and the, and the background on a comprehensive plan. It is, it is a tough thing to do, because it is very detailed, and we know it from, from past experience. So with that said, do I have a motion to hold a public meeting?
I make a motion we hold a public hearing.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Elected body, do we have any comments or questions for the staff?
I'm just saying, Calvin, I know it was lengthy, and I know it was hard for us, who have heard this about 6,000 times, but thank you. I understand that you had to do that, so does whoever watches it. And again, Planning and Zoning Commission, thank you for all of your efforts. Dave, thank you for your effort. You were guiding light in this whole thing. And hopefully, we'll have a good plan for the future with something we can work with county with.
We have no citizens here for citizens input for this part, but we do have the, the ability for a lot of people who can't make it here to watch these on video going forward. So our, our residents will be informed as to the, the plan going forward for the town of Rising Sun.
Mr., Mr. Vice Mayor, may I just make one quick comment here?
Sure. Keep it quick.
Two, I, I also want to thank the planning commission. These three have faithfully come out. The meeting attendance of the three ladies here is well over 95%, along with Dave also. Dave, I, a couple of years ago, we were at a, a county meeting, I think, Suzie, you remember being there, where I said, you know, all the towns are gonna name, start naming streets in their towns after Dave Dauscher, because Dave- in their towns after Dave Dowster, because Dave is a very valuable asset to a lot of the towns in Cecil County, and he has been very dedicated to steering us in the right direction. He's told us when we can't do something, he's helped us find a way to do some things at the same time. He's just, I really appreciate all the effort that you've put into it. Judy has gotten involved in the last couple of months in attending the meetings, and that has been a great asset because I don't have to do the planning commission meeting minutes anymore on top of everything else, so I thank Judy for that. The other thing that I'd like to say to the residents on a personal note, I hope that people understand, I know the elected body and the planning commission understands this, that from the day I first came here, I always, I place a very high regard to making sure that I am the eyes and ears and the voice when needed for not only the elected body, the planning commission, but the town of Rising Sun and its constituents also. I am the, you know, the individual who is charged with, you know, getting all the available information so that people can make informed decisions. On one hand, tonight, I was very clear and concise about the frustrations that we are having with the county. There are wonderful people in the county, there are wonderful staff people in the county, there are wonderful elected officials in the county. I don't want for a second to think that we do not appreciate what the county does for the town of Rising Sun. For whatever reason, we have reached a sticking point that I can, I personally feel that it is my responsibility to make sure that not only the elected body and the planning commission is armed with all the available information. You guys know that I've always said, I'm happy if I can put my head on the pillow at night knowing that I gave you the information. Whatever you do with the information, I respect and I'm good with. The same goes for the residents. I hope they understand that this is our opportunity to provide for this community like previous boards and elected officials, no matter how hard they tried, they didn't have the resources available to do that. We now do. After 13 years of clawing our way through this water and sewer, we are a player in the area, in this region. We have, we've talked about it over and over, people want to move to the town of Rising Sun. On a daily basis, we are trying to find ways to improve upon our services, to do things better, and I can assure you, it is done with the number one goal of providing the absolute best for our residents. And speaking on behalf of Judy, the Chief Peterson, our Public Works crews, our office staff, our Public Works crews, we accept the responsibility of putting not only the elected body and the planning commission in a position to succeed, but to put our residents in a position to succeed too, and that is a driving motivation behind what we do. So I was very frank tonight, I know the mayor, if he were here, he wanted to take that position also, so it's just very important that people understand just how critical this watershed moment is for the town of Rising Sun, and we need to get it right. Thank you.
Yeah, and let's not also, let's not forget our zoning Board of Appeals members who don't have to meet as often, but they're a crucial part of the elected body, the planning zoning, and the zoning Board of Appeals. And both of those groups do this voluntarily. It's not a paid event, and like I said, under Commissioner Braun, they started meeting twice a month. So we are very lucky here in town that from our police department, our town staff, our Board of Public Works, and our elected body and things, we have a group that cares about the town because first and foremost, we're residents here. We have, as you say, skin in the game, and people want to live here, I moved here because I wanted to live here, I like having some resources close by, and we want to know what we're planning to have in the future so that we still have the rural area we live in here and still have deer eating our flowers out of the backyard, and possums in my bird feeder and things like that. But we do need to plan for the future and for the growth, because in the 14 years I've lived here, I've watched many two-car families go to four-car families and more traffic, and thankfully, along with the mayor and Commissioner Braun, we've got paving going on the roads, we've got a new water and sewer system, sewer system that's environmentally friendly because we go right into the local streams here. So it affects us all personally first and foremost. So we just want to make sure we thank everybody, especially thank you, the Planning and Zoning Board, for all of your commitment of time to make this very lengthy, detailed document available. And it's politically charged, you know, many of the members of the county council are not with us at this point due to elections, who've supported this fully, and now we've got a change in the political climate which changes things, and we'll probably see that continue to roll over and over as we go forward. So next on our agenda, are there any deliberations for consideration of the board, or are we ready to do any action items as the elected body?
I have no deliberations.
Are we ready, do we have any motion to accept and approve the recommendation for, from the Planning and Zoning Board for approval at this time?
So moved?
Seconded.
Mr. Chairman, I offer up an amendment.
Okay.
There's been considerable discussion around the McDonald track, and as the development, I'm sorry, the economic development ex officio, one of the things that we have an interest in is the economic development of the town of Rising Sun. On that note, there is approximately 10 acres at the front of the McDonald track. Calvin, do you want to pull that up?
Oh yeah, let me, I peek clearer to bring it up, Google it.
That we have discussed as putting in the comprehensive plan as potentially rural business. I think that's the right, the correct zoning, correct Calvin?
Yes.
Okay. So I'd like to offer up an amendment that we change, accept the comprehensive plan as is with the amendment that we re, that we change from the original comprehensive plan here to include that 10 acres as rural business.
I second the amendment.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it doesn't look like it wants to give me that area.
I was going to wait till Calvin brought it up so we could get a little more view of it here and everybody to understand where and what we're talking about.
Well, it's the track that sits directly on 1274 between the Community Fire Company
of Rising Sun and its RNJ.
RNJ, it's in an area that is predominantly commercial. There is one residential house that's next to the fire company, but it kind of wraps around, excuse me, behind that. There's, across the street, there's, some of the area is commercial, especially down across from the fire company, but across the street directly from this is in fact residential, but the predominant nature of that side of the road is commercial.
So that also extends down to some of the old?
Those other commercial properties.
Right, just down from the fire hole.
Correct.
It extends down on most of the back of old banks.
Okay.
All right, so the lot being questioned is right here, and Mr. Thompson, Mr. McDonald came before the planning commission and they met with the elected body also, and they've had a realtor come in to talk to us too. Commissioner Walker, Commissioner Warnock, what I'm understanding you to say is, here's the fire company, here's the residential property, this is RNJ Graphics. The property owner has requested to, they're tentatively looking to annex into the town, they don't know if they want to do the entire thing, or if they want to just annex part of it now and in the future annex the rest, that's all open for discussion. But it would be basically this two, I think it's maybe two, yeah, 2.62 acres of ground makes up the front parts, and then to this fence line here, this total acreage here is 94 acres, but they're only looking, I believe this is about eight acres here in the front, seven and a half. So this and that across here would be the 10 acres that Mr. McDonald had requested the elected body to look at. So I guess for clarification, what you're suggesting is we redo our maps and update one of those keys that talks about the change in zoning to see what the net impact would be in that area by having this area right here on their property down there zoned rural I believe right now, the whole thing in our plan is zoned rural estate, it would come in as rural estates. So that's the clarification, if I understood what you're asking.
Yeah, the remainder would stay rural estate, but just the, like you said, to the fence line.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second?
No, it's actually a point of order, we have an amendment to the original motion. We have to vote on first.
Okay, so if you repeat it again, because it's getting late, and I've kind of gotten off track here.
The amendment is to amend the map for the Reynolds track.
No, McDonald.
I'm sorry, McDonald track, yeah.
Yeah, we're all.
Yeah, the McDonald's track, to make the front 10 acres, which would be that front parcel of about two and a half acres, and the seven and a half acres approximately behind it down to the fence line, to make that rural business.
Okay, you have a motion?
I second.
Second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. So I think with that, Calvin, unless you have any further comments on that for clarification?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, the motor, Vice Mayor, the, we've amended the original motion, so we still need to vote on the original motion.
Okay, and remind me of the original motion.
The original motion, well, the motion, the now amended motion is to accept the comprehensive plan with the one change we just accepted, or the one change we just voted to amend.
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So?
We have a comprehensive plan?
Yes.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Unless we have any, and like I said again, thank you to everyone involved, and I know I'm speaking for the mayor who wishes he could have been here, I know he would have just loved all this detail tonight. So, you know, I know we all echo his, that he appreciates greatly all the work that was put into this thing, so do we, because we know what it took, the long nights here on Mondays, and just greatly appreciate it. So if there's no further comments, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you again.